Commissioner Larson?
Here.
Commissioner Campanella?
Here.
Commissioner Bartlet?
Here.
Vice Chair Jordan?
Here.
Chair Lodge?
Here. That brings us to preliminary matters, the first one of which is the draft minutes of February 2nd, 2012. Are there any additions, deletions, corrections? Not a motion would be in order to approve?
So moved.
Motion made and seconded to approve the minutes of February 12th, 2012. All those in favor say aye.
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 Madam Chair, I abstain.
One abstention, Commissioner Larson. And the second item is Resolution 002-12 relating to 1202 Shoreline Drive. That is up for adoption. Any discussion on that item, Mr. Carter?
No, Chair. Maybe staff can point me to where in the resolution the comment about the additional modification request for the Westerly property line for the over height, the wall, is that somewhere in the reso? Or, I couldn't find it, but maybe I didn't look.
Commissioner Bartlet, we didn't put it in. And the reason that we didn't is because it's basically just saying that the project has to comply with its zoning ordinance. So, we figured we didn't need to put it in because it'll have to either get the mod, if it needs it, or it won't.
Okay, thanks.
Any other comments, questions? If not, a motion would be in order to approve Resolution 002-12.
So moved.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Any abstentions?
Madam Chair, I abstain.
And one abstention, Commissioner Larson. And the third item is Resolution 003-12 relating to 200 block Chapala Street. Any questions, comments on that resolution? If not, a motion would be in order to approve.
So moved.
Motion made and seconded to approve Resolution 003-12. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed. And then abstentions?
And I abstain, thank you.
And Commissioner Larson abstaining. Okay, are there any requests for continuances, withdrawals, postponements, or addition of ex-agenda items, Mr. Cotto?
There are not.
And are there any announcements?
We have one. Allison will give you a quick update.
Okay, Mr. Buss?
Thank you, Chair Lodge. I just wanted to let you know that on Tuesday, the City Council approved ballot language for the Veronica Meadows Bridge, and so that will be placed on the June 2012 ballot for approval or not by the voters.
Thank you. The next item is comments from members of the public pertaining to items not on this agenda, but not seeing any members of the public present. We will move on to our discussion item for today, the Planning Commission training. Mr. Cotto is going to take over on this?
Yes, thank you. So, this is billed as a training, but I'm hoping that it's more of a discussion. I don't want it to be me talking to you about what you should be doing, right? It's more about, because I can do that to you anytime, right? On a one-to-one basis, I can call you up, or you can call me, and we can have these discussions. The purpose that I really want to try to do here is to get the commissioners talking to each other, you know, to find out essentially, like, how do we do what we do? And we're going to go a little bit to the staff part, how we do what we do, as part of this discussion, but I hope the meat of this is when we get to the point where we're talking about decision-making, that we can, you know, you can talk to each other about how you do it, and perhaps by doing that, you know, we all get better informed about where we're all coming from and how we make decisions, and maybe something's, someone's doing something that you don't do that you think is helpful, or you're doing something that they don't do, vice versa, right? So, I'm hoping that this will be kind of a big discussion. And, so, it's about decision-making, you know, Stella's suggestion way back was to make it into the context of, put it in the context of a meeting, and I've done that. I've put things in the order of how we might see them on an agenda, right? Or, yeah, an agenda. And then also during that time, we'll be having some reminders about this and that administrative stuff, you know, or requests that we have of you for various items. What I wanted to start off with was the Code of Conduct. This is the Excellence in Service Code of Conduct that the City Council adopted for itself, all its boards and commissions, and its staff. It consists of five different generalized topics. The first one, attentive and understanding. I will be a careful and understanding listener. I will be open to new ideas and will explore alternatives. Second, responsive. I will be responsive to provide, I will be available to provide service and will respond in an appropriate manner. I will be thorough, efficient, and prompt. Third one, fair. I will strive to be consistent and fair, and will give complete and honest information and guidance. Courteous and respectful. I will be friendly and courteous. I will be respectful and understanding of others' issues and needs. And last but not least, knowledgeable and solution-oriented. I will make every opportunity to learn and improve my skills and knowledge. I will use that knowledge to be resourceful and proactive in solving problems and reaching decisions. I will look for creative and workable solutions to problems. I just wanted to give that as a reminder as we get going. We all need that once in a while. And the first thing I want to talk about is the staff hearing officer. It's not quite in the context of a meeting, but the staff hearing officer is Susan Rueden, who's here with us today. She's been appointed, the staff hearing officer was a position that was created about, I don't know, six years ago, probably, 2005, 2006. And the purpose of it was to, basically, to take some of the burden off the Planning Commission, take some of the more minor projects that the Planning Commission was spending a lot of, was, I mean, basically, at that time, it's a whole, it's a different environment than today, right? I don't know if you remember, and some of you weren't here, but the Commission was very, very busy with a ton of different projects, big and small. And the thought was to take some of the small ones and create a staff hearing officer position and shift the responsibility, to delegate part of the responsibility of the Planning Commission to the staff hearing officer. We implemented that in 2006 or 2007, and Betty Wies, the city planner, was the staff hearing officer for the first couple of years to get it going, because it's a new program. After that, Suzie took it over, and it's worked pretty well. You know, she's come back several times with statistics, but basically, you know, I think about somewhere between 20, about 20% of the cases that used to come to the Planning Commission are now heard by the staff hearing officer, and that percentage is still about the same even today. There's just, the overall number is much smaller because of the economy. So decisions of the staff hearing officer are appealable to the Planning Commission, and also, something unusual, well, it's not unusual, it's just, never mind. Decisions of the staff hearing officer can also be suspended by the PC liaison of a chair or the vice chair. And the idea behind that was, it's the equivalent of an appeal, but when we were going through this process, it didn't seem appropriate to make the Planning Commission appeal a staff hearing officer decision to bring it to them, right? So, because there's a fee involved, and, you know, it was awkward. So, we created this process called the suspension, and even though only those three can actually do the suspending, any of the commissioners can talk to one of those three and ask for it to be suspended. One thing that has come up as a concern is that there sometimes is a belief that that has to happen at a meeting, a suspension has to happen at a Planning Commission meeting, and that's not the case. You know, and one of those three can call me, or Betty, or, well, one of the two of us, or Suzie, and then announce that it needs to be, that they want it to be suspended, and then, oh.
No, no, I was just going to add that it is important that it has to happen within the 10 calendar days. It's the same time period as an appeal by the general public, but, so the suspension has to happen within that 10-day period.
But it doesn't, yeah, so it's just notifying us, and then what we will do, the decision, whatever it is, gets suspended, it's no longer whatever it was, and then we'll schedule it for the next possible Planning Commission agenda, and then it'll be, it'll be a brand-new hearing, de novo, they call it, hearing at the Planning Commission.
Yes, Deborah?
I'm not sure if this is the appropriate time to ask you, but I'm thinking back to the 512 Bath Street, the Bradley's project.
Yes.
I'm recalling that Stella, it could also have been, the council member White told me he was also involved in calling it back up. I don't know if that's technically true, but I remember then it came to us for further scrutiny.
Correct.
Now, is that a suspended decision?
Yes, that was a suspension.
So that would fall under?
Commissioner Larson, yes. Commissioner Larson suspended that, and we brought it to the Commission. And it's, and at that time, it's like an appeal, you know, which is a de novo hearing. It's as if, you know, the Planning Commission gets to look at everything and make its decision based on all the evidence that it has before it.
Yes, Madam Chair. Once, I'd like to just reiterate that point, is that once a decision has been suspended and brought to the Planning Commission by any of the three members, it functions as if it's an appeal hearing. It's exactly, you know, as Danny has already mentioned, it's a de novo hearing, the applicant has its presentation, there's public comment, it's just like any other appeal hearing that you would normally see. It's just that, the only distinction between an appeal and the, you know, and a suspension action was simply to distinguish and avoid having some question of whether or not a Planning Commissioner would have to pay the appeal fee.
Thank you. Well, this is all brand news to me, so, John, you have a question?
Just a question. The applicant is told at the end of the hearing that the appeal would both be available to the public and Planning Commission as well. They're notified of that?
Yeah, I'm Susan Rueden, staff hearing officer. After each item action I take, I announce the 10-day appeal period, and then also announce the possibility of suspension.
Thank you.
Mike?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was wondering on that, looking at those three people there, and I didn't realize there were, I thought it was actually just the liaison who would be reviewing that and run it back up for a suspension. So, lead me through that process, maybe, if someone knows a Planning Commissioner, and somebody has a decision made that they're not in agreement with, is this process also set up that that person can go talk to a Planning Commissioner and get their agreement to bring it to Planning Commission? Is that part of the reason it's there, and is that appropriate or not appropriate?
No.
Or should it be that the Planning Commission is paying attention to the decisions regardless of that, and feels it's sense enough to bring up?
Danny?
If a person who's involved with the project, right, either as an opponent or a proponent, if they feel like they don't like the, if they don't like the decision, they can appeal it, and they should. That's the appropriate method for a member of the public or the applicant team to get it to the Planning Commission. It is not appropriate for one of those people to contact a Planning Commissioner and say, "Did you see what happened? You should suspend this thing." You know, it's not for that, because they have their own method of bringing it to the Commission. It's really, it's really as part of the oversight responsibility of the Planning Commission, you know, if the Planning Commissioner feels like the staff hearing officer's going off the rails, you know, that's the time to have a, to have this decision suspended, and that's where it comes from.
Madam Chair.
Yes. Scott, I thought you probably have something to add here.
Sure. I have a slightly different gloss in the sense that those three members of the Planning Commission who have the authority to suspend, they will take their own counsel. They will listen to whoever they wish to listen to, and they made, that suspension is theirs to exercise. I agree that it wasn't really intended to supplant an appeal by an interested member of the public or an applicant or proponent, and so, in that sense, we weren't really thinking of it operating that way, but I'm not going to look into the reasoning behind a suspension if any one of those three chooses to exercise that right. One key point to make is that if an action is suspended as opposed to appealed, members of the public have different standing. They would not have the same standing they would have as an appellant, where an appellant is given an equal amount of time as the applicant to make their presentation. If an action is suspended, they are only allowed the normal public comment period, which is typically two minutes. And so that has come as a surprise once or twice when we've had a suspension and an interested member of the public wished to make a broader presentation than two minutes, and they were told that was not allowed.
Still? Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, that, coming to mind about the specific case of Bath Street, it took, I had to review everything very carefully to make that suspension, and it really came down to the wire because there was a lot of material, and I just had to make a decision, but I also had talked to Suzie about it, you know, and she's been great about if there's something, and it hasn't been many things really, but if there's something that she, you know, maybe this might take a little more scrutiny, she'll speak up too. I mean, it's not like a party of one over there. It sort of is, but not as you would imagine. So, it's, to me, it's about the communication once again, and I think that's the only decision I suspended. But the concern I have is that with the economy and our regular meeting schedule, the suspensions are a little trickier, you know, if we don't get them in by the 10 days, if there is something, then if we don't meet an appropriate amount of time, you know, for that 10 days, maybe could you comment on that? Because that is something I've been concerned about.
Yeah, I tried, I'll try to be more clear. If a member, if the PC liaison, the chair, the vice chair wants to suspend, they just have to contact us. It doesn't have to take place in the context of a Planning Commission meeting, which could be more than 10 days out. Just the same way that an appeal just has to, they have to write a letter and submit a fee, you know, the suspension, you basically just have to contact us.
Well, and I-
Oh, Scott says do it in writing.
Yes. Okay.
Please do it in writing, just so that there's a record of when it was received by Community Development, so if there's, it just avoids any question later that the suspension occurred after the deadline or something.
And is writing via email sufficient?
Email is a very good tool for that, since there's a time and signature on it.
Okay. Thank you. I don't know if everyone knows, I only recently discovered this, but if you have it, receive an email, and you grab it with a mouse and drag it to your desktop, it is there forever, unchangeable. So, if you, you know, so that really is a good piece of evidence in terms of, you know, whether it was sent and when, and what was said. And I just wanted to comment, I think with this business of the three members being able to suspend a case, my feeling that was put in there, so, because these were the minor issues that were taken from the Planning Commission and given to the show, so that, you know, things could be handled more efficiently, but it's to give kind of an oversight as well.
Correct.
So that, so that you can come back to it.
Right. And I also wanted to, another reason that it wasn't just the PC liaison is because what if the PC liaison's on vacation in the 10 days, right? I mean, there had to be, there had to be enough robustness, I guess, in order to make that system work.
Okay.
It doesn't have to be all three, just anyone.
Well, I was just going to bring that point up in answer to Commissioner Jordan's comment, that when we put this in, it was purely so that it didn't have to fall on just one person. If that person happened to be gone on a two-week cruise or something, then there would be no opportunity for a suspension, so we put in a chair and a vice chair also. And I'd make a second comment too, and that is that the, it's not there to be critical of the staff hearing officer, but sometimes it makes it a little bit better for the staff as well as the community if you got seven people in a more open public hearing with their eyes and brains all looking at it than putting the whole load on Susan. You know, sometimes, some projects, it's better to get more eyes looking at it and take some of the heat off of the staff hearing officer. The blame, so to speak.
Right, I agree with that. In fact, there was an appeal that the Planning Commission heard, it was the medical marijuana dispensary at 2915 Delavina, and when that was at the staff hearing officer, I actually recommended that she deny the project so that the applicants could appeal it, because then, you know, because it was very controversial, and there was a lot to think about, and we thought it'd be better to have seven votes. So, and then, obviously, it came here, and it was appealed from here, too, to the council. Okay, so the reason I brought this, the subject up first is because Suzie's here, she's a decision-maker as well, so I thought it would be good to have her involved in this conversation about decision-making.
Suzie, did you want, have any general comments you wanted to make on your role?
Oh, I was just going to add that after every hearing, I contact Stella, either by email or a phone call, and like she said, if I have some concerns regarding a project, I'll give her a call and just alert her to the fact that there's a project coming up that I have some concerns on, and she may want to watch it, or if she can show up. And so, it's always nice when I see her in the audience. So I think I agree with Stella, the importance is communication, you know, back and forth and issues I see, and then also being aware and listening to what the Planning Commission decisions are, so I can implement those too.
All right, on to the next slide. So, the first thing that's often, well, the first thing that's always on the PC agenda is the site visit, and I want to just go over a couple of things. The reason for the site visit is to get, are you getting cold? I just turned it down.
Yeah, it feels like you turned the AC on.
This room is crazy, you know, it's either too hot or too cold, so it'll come back up. So the purpose of the site visit is for the Commission to get site and neighborhood context, right? What, it's one thing to look at it on the plans, it's a whole nother thing to look at it out in the world. So, we schedule it, you know, Tuesday mornings. We've, last year sometime implemented a leaving exactly at 7:45 rule, right? And now Julie sends out an email Monday before saying, "Who's riding in the van? Remember, we leave at 7:45. If you're not meeting in the van, here's where you're going to meet us," right? Because, and that's not so important for some of the smaller projects, but I do remember the Samarcand site visit where Deborah was trying to find us, because it's huge, right? And if you don't know, you don't know. So we do that, so we ask that you respond to that email telling us where they're going to be in the van, and that you be here at 7:45. So the site visit's not a hearing. The site visit's not a place to take testimony from people, you know? So, in general, and this is a little bit hard to articulate in exactly black and white fashion, but the kinds of questions that we would, we would think would get an immediate response are things like, "Where is this? Where is that? Where's the tree you're going to, where's, you know, where, how does this all fit in with the topography?" That kind of thing, where applicants and staff can try to respond and show you on the site, so that it makes the site visit and the context more, I mean, it makes it useful, right? The kinds of things that we would, we would hope that you would ask for and not, and we wouldn't expect a response, would be questions like, "Why are you doing it this way?" Or, you know, more questions that we would want to get answered in the public hearing. But we do appreciate any questions that you have, so that we can, we can get answers to them for you by the hearing. It's not, you know, the site visit's not a forum for anyone, staff, applicants, or opponents, to kind of give their viewpoint, you know? We as the staff will do the best we can to say, "Hey, this isn't for that," right? Wait till the hearing to give your testimony. This is really for the Planning Commission to become oriented to the site in order to be able to better make decisions. So, and that can be, that can be hard to do, because some people get emotional and, you know, they're invested in wanting to say something, but we'll do our best, and we hope that, you know, you understand that it's not really appropriate for them to be doing stuff like that.
Madam Chair, the only thing I would add is, the site visit is a Planning Commission meeting. Members of the public are entitled to attend the meeting, the site visit as well, under the Brown Act. And the way that I would explain it for both the chair or anyone who's acting as the chair at the site visit, is that the site visit is very much like your hearing here in this room, at the stage of the hearing where the applicant is giving its presentation. Now, again, I think Danny's explanation regarding, it's not an, the site visit isn't the time for the applicant to be propounding their opinions about the project and so forth. It really should be matter-of-fact about the nuts and bolts of the proposal. But it is not a time for interested members of the public to make their comments about the project. It's not their time to be asking questions. If they want to ask questions, or if they have questions about a project, maybe a better way to have that handled would be to have their questions presented to staff ahead of time, or some other fashion. But it really, to keep order within the site visit meeting, it really, I would recommend to the chair or anyone acting as the chair, that it's handled basically the same as your, the applicant presentation portion of your meetings here.
Thank you. Bruce?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I had a recent discussion with Danny, and I think your comment about a heads-up for questions for response at the hearing also relate, if we're at the site and we see things that we want staff to be able to address in the hearing, we should probably let you know at the same time, so that you can research it and be prepared at the hearing, rather than just firing questions here on the spot. So I think it's questions not just for the applicant, but for staff. Yes, please.
Okay. John, and then Addison.
I noticed when we were going to and from on the van, there was no discussion really of the places we were going to. Is that because of the Brown Act, that we would not be able to discuss the project either going or coming?
Because it is a meeting, and because members of the public are entitled to attend these meetings, I really would recommend, and I would, I'd advise that you not discuss the application or the project in the van. It really should, the van is providing transportation. If you'd like, I could send a series of subjects or something, you know, the weather, the latest movies, or something to talk about. Yeah, it's just best that you'd not discuss the project in the van, since it will very frequently have a majority or a quorum of the Commission, and therefore, even the van itself is a meeting, and if you're not following all of the Brown Act compliance, you know, those allowing the public to attend, then it's, you're running afoul of that.
And that was my observation, thank you. One more question, if I can, Madam Chair. As we're walking around the site, there might be a conversation taking place by the Planning Commissioner and either the applicant or his professionals. I guess that's allowed to be done, but if it's an important point, should the Commissioner just get everybody's attention for a second and try to get the response, so everybody can hear it?
I would agree with that approach.
Thank you.
Addison?
The issue about what goes on in the van really came to an interesting point several years ago, when one of the local news media that was oftentimes critical of the city showed up and rode in the van, because he was convinced that we were carrying on secret business in the van. And, so, the public theoretically can ride in the van, too. I mean, they're taxpayers, and it's a public meeting, it's been publicly agendized. But I would also say that I remember hearing when I first got on the Planning Commission, what's said in the van stays in the van. And I would second what Commissioner Bartlet said about giving a heads-up to staff, and sometimes to the applicant, about things that you know you're going to bring up at the Thursday meeting that you just want to highlight, so they're prepared, so it's not just everybody scrambling to try to get an answer. Sometimes things show up at the site that were not at all obvious on a two-dimensional set of plans. And I would also like to point out a little interesting anecdote, that sometimes things on site visits don't go the way people thought they would. I can remember one where we were to do a coastal development permit on one of the houses over along Shoreline or someplace, and the applicant's renter didn't even know we were going to be there, and we're knocking on the door and got him out of bed to come through his house to go look at the backyard. So you get some interesting things that happen on some of these Tuesday site visits.
Okay, Deborah?
Thank you. Danny, I really appreciate this, because I think there are some learnings or educational opportunities, both for the public to understand, and I'm not sure how we further educate them as to the purpose of these site visits, and the parameters around which they're allowed to attend and participate or not. And I- And I was thinking, and then, of course, then for commissioners to be more educated, but I was thinking back to our primary site visit, I think it was in two thousand and ten, for the Valle Verde master plan, and there were quite a few attendees from the public. And at one point, I became uncomfortable firsthand observing some of the neighbors, both talking to the media and expressing their opposition, as well as talking, kinda singling out from afar some of the commissioners as well, just making comments. And so, I would be interested in hearing from you or my colleagues, how we sort of corral this, especially at the bigger property, the bigger sites, with more participants.
I, I have a couple of suggestions. The first is, for those big contentious ones, another one that comes to mind was, it doesn't We could start out the site visit by making an announcement, hey, this is a site visit, this is the purpose, it's not, it's not a forum for you to, you know, whatever. We could do that sort of thing. For the, for some of the big ones, we could also have a few more staff members out there to help, help, help the commissioners, right, to fend off, fend off the people and their opinions. So, so we'll have to think about that as well. And then, it also is part of the responsibility of the commissioners themselves to say, you know, this, this isn't the purpose of the site visit, so you just hold off and you can, you'll have your two minutes at, at the commission hearing. So, it'll be a combination of, a combination of all those things.
Stella?
Thank you, Madam Chair. When I was chair of this commission, I had opportunity on a few occasions to, to need to be leaderly during a site visit, and it really, it really can come from the chair very efficiently, to set the parameters of the site visit in a very nice, in a very nice way, that the purpose of the site visit is to look at the site, and the public comment has to be held until, until the meeting. And if you do that, in my experience, in a very nice way, people are more than happy, and they'll get ten more friends to come to the meeting, where maybe that's only one person or two that can make the site visit. So, so I think it's very good if the chair kinda defines the scope. And then, as people wander off or start chatting, the chair can also say, okay, you know, we're going back to the van now, let's wrap this up, or, there's many times when I haven't been chair, when I've wanted to wrap it up, you know, just because, okay, we, now it's breaking down into coffee talk, so gotta get things moving. That time is valuable to us and to the applicant and to the public. So, you know, once our business is done, we need to get out of Dodge there.
Sounds good.
Addison?
Yeah, I was gonna add to that, that it's good on some of these big projects, where you get a lot of the public stick together as a group. They tend to go after the lone straggler, like the herd instinct. So, if you kinda wander off to look at something that looks interesting to you over there at the backside of the lot, you may, might find yourself surrounded by some of the interested neighbors and the rest of the commission's over here. So, if you really wanna look at the backside of the lot, maybe get the chairman to bring the whole commission together over there, 'cause they tend not to go after the group, they tend to go after one or two by themselves.
Good point.
Bruce?
Danny, are there some standards that perhaps we can adhere to in terms of the story polls when we go to site visits? I know lately we've been having quite the calamity of either polls not even being up in time for our site visit, and we have to go back multiple times before the hearing to observe it. You don't get the ridge heights, you're not really sure if they're accurate. I mean, is staff really double-checking kind of their story poll plan, and so that we know what we're looking at, or the appropriate markers?
We do check the plan before, before we give the okay for them to put up the polls, 'cause sometimes that can be a super expensive thing for the, for the applicant, so they want our, our input as well. So, we, we do give that input. I, I know that there have been several times that we've screwed it up and forgot, right? I mean, so we apologize for that, we're trying to make sure that that doesn't happen. But for the ones that go up, they're, well, we don't actually measure the heights of the polls to make sure that, you know, they are what they say they, they are. We, we have to trust the applicants that they're putting up the polls what they say.
Right, but I think there's a certification from the contractor installing the polls, that they're within a certain degree of accuracy.
Right, yeah, and that's, that's, that's a requirement.
Right.
But they could lie, you know, but, so we don't, we're not checking everything. We, we have to take that part on faith. And, and then sometimes, you know, we have to make a call on, on how many story polls to put up, because it can be pretty expensive. You know, I don't, I don't, do you recall going out to the Hope Branch Hotel? That was the one that we did for the county? I mean, that had a bazillion story polls, I don't, I can't imagine how much that cost. You know, contrast that against the one we just went to, at twelve thirty-five Coast Village Road. There were some problems with that, because the, the story polls had to go up through these very rickety structures, you know? I don't know if you noticed, some of them, they, they cut a hole through some of their fiberglass corrugated roof material to get the pole to go up. You know, so we have to strike a balance, we have to do the best we can to strike a balance between what'll get you a good indication of what the ridge heights are gonna be, and things like that, and the, and the, the real world, you know, how, how they're gonna be put up.
Is there a requirement for how long the polls need to be up, either beforehand or after? Because I know, like, on that last example, I literally wanted to walk across the street and get a view from the, you know, the higher side elevation on Coast Village Road, and because the van was ready to go and leaving, I was gonna go back in my car, and we already had an email that the polls were down, so you couldn't even...
Do you remember? There, there is a requirement, they're supposed to go up the, from, they're supposed to be up the weekend before to, to at least the, the site, the site visit, but also, I think we're saying to the hearing, sometimes there are safety concerns. For Sandman, we had, you know, all their park, all those structures were in the middle of the parking lot, so, so they needed to take them down, and so we gave permission to do that. Also, this one's kind of a safety concern as well. That's, so we do take that into account as well.
No seem to be any more questions?
Okay, and then, a couple of, you know, administrative items. The lunch meeting, we just had one, it's a, it's a sort of an informal meeting where we talk about upcoming agendas. We'll, we'll do things like substantial conformance determination, level three, where we come to ask for the commission, the commission's input. We'll, we'll also do tandem parking input for transportation staff, and, you know, various updates, like Plan Santa Barbara, things like that. There's not whole much, not much to talk about that. You know, main meeting, we have the roll call. One thing that we wanted to remind you of is that the cameras start rolling at one, so if you come in at one oh-two, the, you know, the cameras watch you come, I mean, you know, it's, it can be obvious. So, if you wanna be on time and you don't wanna be seen as late, then please be here on time.
Yes, Deborah.
Danny, back to lunch meetings. Can you help me understand the threshold of when, I think it was the conditional use permit for Santa Barbara Middle School to go up to APS to take over the Brooks Institute facility? Why that would be appropriate for a lunch meeting and not a televised hearing?
Well, well, okay.
There's probably was a simplicity, right, to that decision-making?
Not, not only that, it was a, it wasn't, it was a tell. I mean, the plant, that staff came to you and said, here's what we did, and here's why we did it.
Oh, I didn't remember that you already did it, okay.
Yeah, so, in that case, you know, it just didn't seem like it was...
I see.
Necessary to have it televised as part of the main meeting.
So, you weren't looking for concurrence? I didn't recall that, thank you, okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Scott?
I, I do wanna impress upon the commission that, that the lunch meeting is still a Brown Act meeting of the commission. Anytime more than a quorum is in attendance and talking about city business, that is a Brown Act meeting. So, that is important for two points. One is that the items on the lunch meeting need to be agendized. And granted, one of your agenda items is, has a very generic description, and I would counsel the commission and staff carefully to not take advantage of that general description. If you have a real substantive topic that you wish to discuss, please tell that to staff and have them agendize it for a future lunch meeting, if you wish to have it discussed in an informal way. I know that the commission and staff find the lunch meetings to be very useful, given their informality, but they, it, it allows for the opportunity for abuse if we're not careful. And, and so that's my point on the lunch meeting.
And just to follow up on that, if, if it's okay, we, when, when we know that we're gonna have an item like that one, we'll put it on as a, as a lunch item. If you look at today's agenda, there should be something that says Plan Santa Barbara Update on it. So, so when we know, you know, they are properly agendized.
John, and then Addison?
A question on emails. If there's a question for either staff or Mr. Vincent, for example, and it sent out an email, does it just go directly to them? You, you would not copy other members, other planning commissioners for their information or, or the chair, but wait, like, for your response, if you feel that it's important that everybody knows the answer? Or, how does that work?
It's, we're gonna talk a little bit more about that in a, in a slide that may be even the very next slide, where we talk about the Brown Act, but, but the answer is maybe. It sort of depends on the topic, right? If it's, if it's about the Christmas party, then, you know, I don't think that's a big deal. But if it's about an upcoming agenda and you want, agenda item, and you wanna have, you wanna have some clarity, then I would say, don't, don't CC the other commissioners.
If, and, I can tell you that if any of you have a substantive question for me about an agenda item that's coming up, what I will do is, I will copy all of the other commissioners with my response. So, you don't have to copy them with the question. What I will do is, I'll either paraphrase the question, or maybe I'll just forward the, the email chain to each of you. Where you, where we start getting into the potential for, for a Brown Act problem, which is called a serial meeting, is where you have multiple emails copied to more than a quorum of the commission, going back and forth, and telling each other your thoughts and, and positions regarding an upcoming agenda item. That, that is a serial meeting, and that is a way of, of basically having an un-agendized meeting of the commission. One-way communication from myself or staff to the commission itself, that's not communicating any of your personal thoughts regarding the project, and so, that, that is, is, if carefully done, does not present the problem of a serial meeting.
Addison?
Madam Chair, I have a question for Mr. Vincent. Given the modern electronics, the fact that we're videoed, the fact that we have detailed minutes, why do we need to have a roll call? To me, it seems like a superfluous, archaic thing that's left over from days of Parliament or something.
You didn't let this one go, did you? You had that question the last time you were on the commission, and I never had, and I never had a good answer to it. I, I think it, you know, it's one of those formalities. I mean, even today, it was kind of one of those interesting things where we're all here. I was kind of chuckling to myself over here that the, the roll call could have been, everybody answer "I," and you could have answered in chorus. So, it's, I think it, right, it's, it's a matter of formality, and I don't know of any requirement for it.
Stella?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also wanted to add that the lunch meeting is a public meeting, and we don't get many people now, but we used to get a fair amount of people in that meeting. And the other thing is, before we get too far away from the site visit, I was the commissioner in the van, and I was very, very new when I was trying to ask questions about a project on Upper State. And I didn't even know who the person in the van was from the press, but he was there. So, you always have to, and, and I found out later, so I wanna underscore two things. Number one, this is a very important training session, because at least we're having them. And number two is, is you always have to act as though the public is present, even, even if you don't realize it. Just, if you just conduct yourself as such, then there's no question. I felt terrible when I, when I was informed by everybody else on how to behave in the van, but, you know, it was necessary, and I understood and I took it, like a girl, female, not a man. But anyway, but anyway, it was constructively rendered and constructively taken, so, and I, I actually couldn't even identify the person by sight, because I'd never seen them. So, it's just something that we have to be aware of all the time. Thanks.
But you recognized him later when he came to the lunch meetings.
Yeah, sure. Never forget a good face like that.
Sounds like there were some interesting times going on here before I was on the Planning Commission.
So, a couple of other things under preliminary items. So, it's, it's the time that we look at the draft minutes and agendas like we just did today. I just wanna give a little background of what happens before you get those, right? Between a meeting that, that takes place, you know, the very next day, or maybe even that evening, Julie and I put out a finished agenda, Julie mostly, I just review it. And then, and then she starts on the minutes. She'll, she'll, we do action minutes now, so they're, they're pretty short, but she does her best to, to summarize what happened at the meeting, the motions that were made, if there were some, some particularly relevant comments, those that get put in, and then they'll be reviewed by the case planners, and then they'll be reviewed by me, and then they will be finalized, and, and then they come to you for, for your decision. Just wanna give you a little background, I don't know if you ever knew how that worked. Under changes to the agenda and announcements, I don't have it up on the, up on the PowerPoint, but I had a little thing here in the staff report. There's a, there's a, what's it called? I guess it's a procedure known as the reconsideration. We've done that at least once, that I know of, Julie says twice. And reconsideration, the time to announce a reconsideration would be during the, the announcements and the preliminary items in a hearing. The purpose of the reconsideration, let's say, in the, in the very previous meeting, there was a vote on something and it was a four-three vote. A member on the prevailing side of the vote can bring it back up for reconsideration, like they changed their mind. That, there's some time limits on, on exactly when that has to be done. It definitely has to be agendized on the very next Planning Commission agenda, and then there would be a vote on whether to reconsider it or not. And then, if there was, if the vote to reconsider passed, then it would be scheduled for a future agenda to actually do the reconsideration. And I can't remember exactly what the timeframe is, though.
Scott?
The motion for reconsideration needs to be agendized on the next regular meeting of the commission. And if we are at the beginning of the month, and we have weekly meetings going along, you gotta remember that agendas come out at least seventy-two hours in advance of your regular meeting. So, we've now lost almost half the week. So, if you wish to have, and if you're on the prevailing side, and wish to reconsider your decision on that prevailing motion, you have a short window to communicate that to staff in order for it to get on to the next week's agenda. If we're later in, in the month, it's the next regular meeting. And so, that's, there's a short period of time to do that. Now, personally, the reconsiderations we've had, as you might imagine, they, they're not fun. You know, they're messy, it's, it's complicated, because the, you know, you're, basically, if the, the motion for reconsideration passes, you're starting all over with a new hearing again. And it, and so you're, you're bringing back everybody again. Personally, I, I would, if you're, if you're not confident, or if you are missing information, if, you know, if you, if, if you're not confident of your decision, I'd recommend that you make a motion for continuance. Get more information, get a, you know, before the, before the original decision is made, as opposed to making a decision in haste, thinking about it over the next night or two, and then reconsidering it, only to go through the same motions, really, that you would with a continuance. Yet, you have that, you have that past decision in, in the background. So, that's just my two cents. Luckily, I don't have to sit up on the dais and make the decisions.
This is a little bit embarrassing, but back in my first time on the Planning Commission, this would have been nineteen seventy-four, the Wilcox property came up before us, the Toso proposal, some of you may remember that, for a hotel. And, you know, we went through the hearing, and I voted in favor of it, and by the time I got to that door, I was saying, oh my God, why did you vote that way? And so, it did get put back... did you vote that way?" And so it did get put back on the, you know, it was brought back. And the city did get sued when I changed my vote. But I sometimes, you know, these things aren't always black and white, you know? There are different issues to consider. And it's not just yes and no. It's nice, it's maybe. So I think, you know, you don't want to have to do it, but sometimes it's necessary. And I'm glad I did. I got the Douglas Family Preserve instead.
Okay, so I just wanted to bring that up because that would, something that could happen at the preliminary items. And so now we're starting to get into the meat of an actual item. So the first thing before we started talking about an item...
You skipped by something on your staff report, which was a public comment.
Oh, okay.
As just, you know, as somebody who watches all these for some reason, could you explain again what discretion we have for stacking comment cards?
We're going to, I want to talk about that
Okay.
a little bit later.
I'll hold my note then.
Because the public comment that's in the preliminary item, that's for people who have something to say that's not on the agenda.
Okay, I'll hold that question.
So that stacking ever happens. Well, I have it later. Okay, so a few things we want to talk about before we start talking about an actual item are things that, we didn't know what to call it, disclosure, other issues, particularly the Brown Act and the Fair Political Practices Act. The Brown Act is an open meetings act, right? It's huge, and there are a lot of different examples. The purpose of it, though, is really to prevent these, you know, backroom, smoky, closed-room, you know, meetings that you think about when you think about these things. And so it's really to keep the decision-making out in the public, right? We had a little bit of a discussion about the van and the site visit, and how you're supposed to conduct yourself. And that's really because we want, as a community, as a society, we want these types of decisions to be made in a public arena. We don't want the decision-makers to be deciding, and then coming to the dais, and then going through some motions, and then making them, and then taking the action that they already knew that they were going to make before the whole thing started. There's... So there's a couple of different aspects. The one aspect that can be important, and this has been brought up as sort of a red herring recently, is that one of the main purposes of the Brown Act also is to provide notice, adequate notice of the hearing, right? And we do that by, we have a 10-day notice. The notice goes out 10 calendar days in advance. We send notices out. We publish notices as legal ads in the paper. And not all that is required by the Brown Act. That's required by our own ordinances. But the Brown Act does require an agenda to be put out 72 hours in advance. So we put our agendas out about a week in advance. But sometimes we need to change something. And we can actually, even though the notice has gone out, you know, we can still change it on the agenda as long as it's 72 hours in advance, which means Monday at noon. So sometimes you'll see a revised agenda come out, you know, Monday morning, to say we're adding or taking something off the agenda. So that's part of the Brown Act. The other thing we've talked a little bit about was, you know, serial meetings. And I don't know how much more we need to talk about that, since Scott, you kind of went over that a little while ago. The other thing I wanted to talk a little bit about was ex parte communication. You know, depending on who the chair has been, you know, there has been, some of the chairs have wanted to have some disclosure of ex parte, others it didn't seem to matter so much. I know Scott has something to say on it. I was thinking if we wanted to have a little discussion about it here. Scott?
Sure. One of the things I wanted to point out is that the planning commission guidelines do have a recommendation against participating in ex parte communication. And while I support that recommendation for a couple of different reasons, I do want to point out to the commissioners that ex parte communications in and of themselves are not illegal. You can have a conversation with fellow citizens, interested parties, applicants, and so forth. I do recommend against them because inevitably, they end up being an opportunity to lobby a commissioner on one side or the other of a project. I personally would find it easier as a commissioner to just simply have a standing rule of no ex parte communications, and then you're less likely to injure anybody's feelings by saying no. The other reason why I recommend against ex parte communication is for the same reason that when we were talking about the site visit, or about questions about a project, is that it's nice for the whole commission to be making your decision on the same information. So that if it's a piece of information that you feel is important for you to know and make your decision on, it probably would be interesting to the rest of the commissioners. And it avoids, the last point, I guess, would be, it would avoid that situation where a member of the public, or a proponent of a project, is standing here at the podium saying, "Now, you remember when we had that conversation, you said this, that, or the other thing, and you end up getting stuck with..." I mean, personally, you could change your mind, but you end up having your own statements thrown back at you. And so the one additional point I would make about ex parte communications is that from time to time, we have members of the commission who are interested in disclosing the ex parte communications that they have. I'm not going to tackle you and tell you not to do it, but by, at least in my experience, sitting here watching commissioners disclose their ex parte communications, it tends to me to look as if you're disclosing something that shouldn't have happened. And I know that it's okay, but not everybody in the public necessarily may know it's okay. And so they might think that you're somehow disclosing or coming clean, when that really isn't the case. And the other thing is, if you get members of the public used to or accustomed to the disclosures occurring, and then by some chance, you miss one once, and it happens to be, you missed it on that most controversial project of the year, all of a sudden, you have the chance of having somebody throwing it back at you, saying, "You didn't disclose that ex parte communication that I saw you having." And you always do that. So personally, I do recommend avoiding ex parte communications for the reasons I've said, but if you have them, you have them. It's part of, it is part of the process. Just don't have them with a quorum of the commission with you.
Scott, as Chair, would you recommend that I, I've tended to forget about ex parte communication, but would you recommend that I ask before each item if there were any ex parte communications to be reported?
Well, I mean, where I was just going, I'd say not. I wouldn't prompt, if a commissioner feels compelled to disclose an ex parte communication, maybe they feel that they got information about it, or they got information that the other commissioners might be interested in, and it might lead to some questions during the hearing, then, you know, maybe there is a point there. But to prompt, going down the line of each commissioner disclosing ex parte communications, that starts getting into the situation I was describing, where it looks like you're coming clean about something that isn't wrong in the first place.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mike?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have two questions. I think the easiest, first one is, the same advice when it's purely a city and/or staff project, because they're actually the applicant then, right? And so the discussion should take place in this room, and not in private, out seeking other information from city planners and staff members?
I still say that it's best to have the information brought out in the hearing, so that your fellow commissioners have the opportunity to hear it, so that members of the public who attend the hearing have the opportunity to comment on it. But at the same time, I know that many of you are, have become very resourceful with your contacts with other staff members, and can get information from staff, and learn a lot about a project. There's nothing wrong with that. But I still personally feel that having the information come out in the open hearing is the best, most transparent way for a decision to be made.
And then my other question is a little more great to me, and that's if, whether it was a city project or not, if it was a private applicant project, but you were of the realization that a specific department or staff function was not part of the process. Let's say it's a public works process, and you're in the midst of the second or third presentation, and there's nobody from a supporting department participating in the process, say, from a Creeks division. Is it, and in this particular example I use, it's a, the city is the applicant. And is it, do you feel it's appropriate or reasonable for a commissioner to reach out to that particular department in the city and ask for more information outside of this venue?
Yes.
Thanks. I like that short answer. That's a good one.
Stella?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, in my experience, people who contact you are really interested in hearing what they want to hear. And I always refer them to staff. If you want more information, just call staff. They've got the most information of anybody. And so as I realized, well, if you contact, if I refer everybody to staff, no one contacts me anymore. And when I was Chair, I did ask for ex parte communication, but I had attended a number of meetings in other cities, most notably Palo Alto of their ABR and their planning commissions, some other things, when I was up there on business, and some other places. If I can catch a meeting, I'll catch a meeting. And they were, they would ask that specific question just as part of their, on their agenda. And so I thought, you know, I kind of liked that they asked that. It wasn't penalizing or anything. But I went to ask the Chair of the Palo Alto ABR a question about it, and she wouldn't even talk to me. She was like, "Nope, nope, can't talk to you." "Oh, well, thank you. Okay. Guess that takes care of that." So anyway, that's what I find, is if you refer people to staff, makes it careful, quick, and kind.
Maybe she thought you were a new reporter.
We do our best to insulate the commissioners from inquiries like that, right? If people want to, we'll get people asking for your email addresses, your phone numbers, and stuff like that. And we do not give them to them. We'll say, "Give it to us, we'll forward it to them." And then we do. But we do our best. I know, I mean, you're all out in the community. People know who you are. Most of you are probably in the phone book as well, so people could look you up. But we do our, we know, we do our part. And then the next part on this slide, I called it the Fair Political Practices Act, but it's really called the Political Reform Act, and it's kind of administered by the Fair Political Practices Commission. And that's a little bit about conflict of interest. In the email that where we sent you this staff report, we also sent you a link to the FPPC website, and it was a little article, they called it a booklet, as you read it, but it was a little article about what is a conflict, and, you know, can I vote on a project? It's quite good. It's also, but it's quite general as well. But I recommend that you read it. And the beauty of being a commissioner is that you can call the FPPC, and they will talk to you. You know, if you have specific questions about, "I think I might have a conflict. Can you help me out with it?" Then, you know, they will help you with that. That's their job. That's what they do. So, but we do give you, you know, I mean, in a general sense, we give you a map. And the map shows any property that you own that you've told us about, and a 500-foot radius map. And basically, what the FPPC has told us is that if the property is within 500 feet of a property that you own, then that's a direct conflict of interest. It's a direct financial gain, or you're affected economically somehow. So maybe, Scott, you want to help me with this? I don't know the precise...
The 500-foot circle is a dividing line with whether or not the decision directly affects a financial interest, or is presumed to not, to be an indirect effect on a financial interest. Whether, if it's direct, then it's, there's a presumption of material effect on your financial interest, and you can pretty much count on it's the safest course is to recuse yourself. If it's indirect, and therefore not material, then it's presumed that, or it's presumed that it's not material, then you can almost count on the fact that it is not affecting your financial interest, and you can participate. I would, I wholeheartedly reiterate Danny's point on contacting the FPPC. I do it regularly when I get questions from commissioners or board members, or if I just have a question about the Political Reform Act. Also, available on their website are their past advice letters. So you have the telephone advice, which is informal advice. They provide it over the phone, and their phone number is right there on their website. The FPPC's website is fppc.ca.gov. You can go there all the time. On that website also are the advice letters. And it's not the greatest search engine, but there is, you just type in a plain language question. Try to use some of the buzzwords, planning commission member, real property interest, business interest. Try to identify the economic interest that you might be having a potential conflict with. And you'll get advice letters that have been written to either city attorneys or other, to other planning commissioners, elected officials, and so forth, on these subjects. And they can really show you how the Fair Political Practices Commission views these conflicts questions. And they have a very clear format, the can I vote pamphlet or outline. That outline follows the eight-step process that is laid out in the FPPC's regulations on how to analyze a conflict of interest. It's key to remember that the Political Reform Act deals with economic conflicts. If you have, if it's a situation where it's your best friend who's the applicant, that's not going to necessarily trigger a Political Reform Act problem. But you may, if you feel like, and this is going to be in your own gut, and this is advice that I can kind of give you in the sense of the way I would approach it, but it's not a legal conflict if your best friend is the applicant before the commission. But if you feel that you can't render an impartial decision, then I'd recommend, if I felt that way and I was on the planning commission, I wouldn't vote. And so if you have that same feeling, my recommendation would be that you not vote, even though there's not a legal conflict of interest that prevents you from doing so. We could talk for a whole other two hours on conflicts. And, you know, but my best advice, and one other point that, when Danny was mentioning the circle, the circle deals with real property interests, highlighted by the center of your real property. But his point there, he said, "The real property that you've told us about," and that's a key thing, is that these are your economic interests. And so I won't know about all of your economic interests, and I don't really want to know all about your economic interests. And so, you know, so in that sense, you know, if you can internalize some of this conflict obligation on your own, using, you know, you can be a little more anonymous with the FPPC staff when you're speaking with them, since they're up in Sacramento, or maybe in San Francisco, I can't remember which. Anyway, the point is that one of the inherent challenges of giving advice about conflicts is that incomplete information can be really problematic in giving complete and accurate advice about conflicts. And so that's just one of the challenges I have to deal with.
Mike?
Well, I just like, I don't know, maybe I haven't, but I just would like to recount that I've probably called the FPPC 10 times in two years, until they finally got me to a point where I'm comfortable, because I don't know if you can imagine, but there's only two or three big insurance companies in town, and, you know, the one I work for has tentacles with everybody. And then you never even know if an LLC is standing in front of you in a different name. You go back and you talk to somebody else working in the office, and, oh, that's somebody who owns something who also owns the LLC. And the FPPC's been really good about walking me through a process on, where they actually have a worksheet that takes into consideration how many employees in your company... have a worksheet that takes into consideration how many employees in your company, what the revenues are for a nationwide company, what the revenues are for this geographic region, how close you are to those revenues, and they basically put you at rest. So, I've had great experience with that, certainly because the city attorney won't help me and just refers me there. So, but I've had nothing but great experience asking those questions. I've never gotten an answer that I found distasteful.
Danny?
The reason this is important, you know, most of the decisions that the commission makes, they're, if we get into trouble with lawsuits and stuff, you know, the city is the one that's sued, right? But for Political Reform Act violations, you're on the hook as individuals, right? That's why it's super important for you guys to understand, and if you feel any kind of unease or uncertainty, you should check with the FPPC, because, you know, you're sort of on your own on that, if it comes up. So, you know, a lot of times, you know, we'll try to advise you. Sometimes, you know, there's a rule, I'm not sure if it's exactly a rule, but there's a policy that we heard about that said, you know, if you are on the commission and you're also, for example, an architect, and you come to us with another, with a project, that's, you know, there's been some advice from the FPPC that you shouldn't be doing that, you should be sending somebody else in, you know? And we've had, we've had an architect on the ABR, you know, have a file, claim filed against him, I guess with the FPPC, you know, for doing stuff like that. So, it's, you know, it's a little bit of, we're trying to protect you, help you to protect yourself. So, please call the FPPC, and I think Scott's got more to add.
Madam Chair, and members of the commission, and any board members and so forth that might be listening to this in the future, I'm happy to help frame a question and so forth. One of the points that is important for you to understand is, if I give advice, or any other city attorney gives advice, we are not the body that enforces the Political Reform Act. And so, our advice does not provide any insulation. And there are cases where a member obtained advice from the city attorney, that advice ended up being erroneous, they were prosecuted, and the court case says, "Sorry, you shouldn't have relied on the city attorney." And so, that, it's not out of a matter of not wanting to be helpful, it's a matter of that my assistance can only go so far. And because of that, my advice always will be very conservative. And since this is a seven-member board, you know, I mean, it's nothing personal, but any one of you is dispensable. I mean, there would be six, or five, and you could still act. And so, if there's a question, then I would recommend that you not vote. Now, if it's a close question, or an issue that is of utmost importance to you, or if for some reason the commission is challenged to find a quorum, we can still talk, but basically what my advice at that point will be is to seek a formal opinion from the Fair Political Practices Commission, because that's the only course of action that provides you any real cover, and any authoritative advice that protects you against a further prosecution. Plus, if it's a close call, and if it's a controversial project, without that kind of cover, without that kind of authoritative decision from a third party, the Fair Political Practices Commission, your participation, unless it's rock solid, will only become a distraction to the ultimate decision. And, so, I mean, I'll give you a personal example. I personally didn't participate in any of the processing of the Cottage Hospital projects because my father was on the board of the Cottage Hospital. He was an unpaid board member, there was no economic interest that accrued to him or me, but out of an abundance of caution and not wanting to distract from that process, I didn't participate in either of those projects while he was on the board. And so, that's just the way I approach these things.
Thank you, Scott. Bruce?
So, let's assume we have an abundance of caution at the dais. How does that affect projects or decisions that require a supermajority vote as you diminish? Can you kind of explain the math on how that works?
Well, we don't have too many that require a supermajority yet of the Planning Commission.
But soon.
But we will soon. And there is an exception in the Political Reform Act where if a conflicted member's participation is necessary in order to enact business, let's say, I mean, let's say four of you are conflicted for some reason, you all seem to have the same, you know, if somebody touches all of you with an economic interest, all of a sudden, you don't have a quorum even. Well, basically, the way I've come down to it is that, and it's only happened once or twice where it even got to that point. We had some members who were absent, we had, and then we were down to a bare quorum, and two of that quorum had conflicts. So, the question was, who was going to participate? It's going to come down to a flip of a coin, because one conflicted member versus another conflicted member, how do you evaluate who's more conflicted? No. So, the way that would play out is if we literally get down to a place where a conflicted member's participation is absolutely necessary to conduct business, then there is an exception available. But, and there's always a but, isn't there? Is, it has to be necessary. If it's an action that can be continued to another week, I'm not sure if we're at that place of necessity. If it is truly an action that needs to be done, taken at that time for some other, you know, for some other reason that really does press the necessity issue, then yes, there is an escape valve. And if there are two conflicted members, yeah, I'd be, I'll be doing a coin flip right here.
Well, how do the numbers shake out? Obviously, normally, it's five out of seven would be supermajority. If there's only six here, is it four out of six? And if there's five, it's four out of five? I'm not quite sure how that...
I hope we never have to get there. Well, we'll end up with, I mean, I'm not even sure what the ordinance, I'm not sure what the supermajority is going to be yet. You know, and on the council, it's specified as five. It needs five affirmative votes. So, in some cases, you could...
Or it has no reference to the denominator, it's just the numerator?
Well, in that case, I mean, the charter specifically identified five affirmative votes for amendments to the general plan and to the zoning ordinance. How this new supermajority for the Planning Commission is going to be written will be a topic for discussion at the ordinance committee and this commission.
So, it could either be a...
Because I don't think, I think the general plan update was...
Could be a fraction or a numerator, either way.
Yeah, the general plan update was not specific as to what type of supermajority, what supermajority meant.
Right.
Yeah. But I suspect, well, I'm not even going to put my finger on either side of that balance.
Thanks for the answer, but I don't know that it was an answer, but thanks.
No, not yet.
Well, if I may speak as having been there when this provision was put before the voters and adopted, the point was to make sure that there was really a strong preponderance of support for a particular thing. And if the body is seven people, I think, well, for me, it would seem, you know, you'd wait until there are seven people there, or whatever you need. Of course, Mr. Maricana recently did that with his Allen Road appeal. He continued it until, you know, that was the applicant's case, to where there would be seven members present, so we'd have a better chance of getting five votes. So, okay.
This would be the point in our agenda where we were talking about a new item, right? We announced the item, and we would be giving a staff report. So, I want to take this opportunity to just talk a little bit about what we do to get to that point, because we do a lot of work before it comes to you that you probably know. There's a whole, you know, there's a whole bunch of different application types you can see up there, as many that I could find acronyms for where I put up, just to have some fun, you know? How many of these do you know what they are? Tentative subdivision map, coastal development permit, conditional use permit, performance standard permit, development plan, transfer of existing development rights modification, general plan amendment, zoning ordinance amendment, local coastal plan amendment, and then new condos, condo conversion, annexation, specific plan. And that's not even all of them, you know, that's just probably 85% of them, because there's a whole bunch of obscure ones that we hardly ever see. So, and an application can have one or multiple ones of those application types, right? An annexation will always have a general plan amendment and a zoning ordinance amendment. It might also have a local coastal plan amendment if it's in the coastal zone, and if there's a development attached, there'll be any number of the other regular application types. So, some of those require something called PRT, the Pre-Application Review Team, and that's a pre-application, it's the first way that someone can get an official read on whether the city would, you know, approve or not approve, or at least get staff support on a project. That's required for tentative subdivision maps and a few other things. And it's a 30-day, about a 30-day process. You know, back in the mid-'90s, we went through a big internal audit to figure out, you know, because we were having some difficulties with making, getting all the comments in a rational sort of way. So, we came up with this, the PRT and the DART, pre-application, it's a 30-day, like I said. People can submit as little or as much information as they want, and we will do the best we can with the information that we have, right? And we'll give back comments, you know, here are the big issues that you have, and then hopefully, they will, if they want to move forward, they'll address those issues and then apply for their DART, their Development Application Review Team project. And that's also called 30-day completeness review. Once they submit, we have 30 days to determine whether they have enough information, they've submitted enough information for us to adequately review the project. And we have an internal procedure where we meet on a Wednesday and distribute out the projects, and then we meet, I think, two weeks after that. But actually, the next day, we do our own site visit. Two weeks later, we come back with a working meeting where all the affected departments will come and discuss all their different issues, and then we'll prepare a letter, and that letter goes out to the applicants, and then they have an opportunity to meet with us to discuss any items that come in that letter. We may have had one or two that have been deemed complete the first time around, but it's usually the second or third time, or sometimes even the fourth time, in order for them to provide us enough information to be deemed complete. After it's deemed complete, the next thing that we have is environmental review.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, certainly.
Back to the previous slide, Danny. For less experienced applicants or developers in the city, I'm often asked, in a sentence, which projects go to Planning Commission? There seems to be a fair amount of confusion. First of all, on a technical basis, would it be fair for me to say, as an assumption, that any projects that require any one of these acronyms or categories, do they go to the commission?
No.
I mean, I can get definitions, I don't know what a ZOA is right now, you'll tell me later.
I would say that...
What is the trigger? Is there a generic trigger that I could use as a working definition for the layperson?
I would say that any one of those type, application types require review, land use approval by either the show or the planning commission, right? It's a matter of degree beyond that, right? Small subdivisions need review by the staff hearing officer for fewer, and small lot line adjustments and things like that. The big ones, and then some coastal development permits, depending on if you're on the bluff top or not, they can be heard by the show or not. And performance standard permits are all heard by the show. Development plans can be the design review boards, the show, or the planning commission.
This is why it's confusing for...
Right, it's, I was, when I first heard your question, I was about to say, all the big projects, but that's not even true either, because big apartment projects get heard by the design review boards only, and if they just have a mod, then they'll be heard by the staff hearing officer. So, there's no, like, pat answer to that, you know? But you could assure them that almost everything undergoes some sort of discretionary review, even like a single-story house on a vacant lot might get away with no single-family design ward, but just about everything else requires either SDB, architecture board or review, HLC, the show, or the PC, almost everything else.
Suzy?
Chair Lodge, Commissioner Schwartz. We do have a handout on our public counter. It is actually entitled Staff Hearing Officer Amendments, and it explains the changes that were made when the staff hearing officer went into effect. And on it, there's a table that has the different application types, and I can bring it up to you, and it says if the staff hearing officer reviews needed, or if the Planning Commission review is needed. So, it's a nice little cheat sheet, and if it's not, you know, multiple family rental housing's not on here, so that needs design review, so it wouldn't need discretionary review. But we do have a bunch of handouts at the planning counter that you can refer to there, and we can give it to them. More's on our website, too, on our handout page.
And on, like, a simple flow chart, that would be too simplistic for...
No, flow chart works. This would suffice for that, I think.
Like this one, it says amendments to project conditions of approval. It says staff hearing officer, and it says, yes, those not significant enough to warrant PC, or it could be Planning Commission review. Annexations, no, for staff hearing officer, but yes for PC. Appeals, there's coastal development permits, you know, explains which ones can go to the show and which ones to the PC.
So, we have that in a handout, but it's not something that you could easily explain, you know what I mean? But we have, on the website, we have a site called Planning Central, and a lot of these, a lot of handouts and information is available to that. So, I would, you know, if people are asking you, tell them to go to our website, go to Planning Central, and they'll most likely find, you know, at least part of what they need, what they're asking for.
Thank you.
Mike?
Danny, I just, I don't know when you want me to ask this question, so just tell me if this isn't the right time, because I don't know if it's more when you want to talk about findings. So, that you get into the DART process, that second 30-day process, and two weeks into that, all the departments come back and start talking about the project, and do their input and discussion, and blah, blah, blah. When, how is it, how would a person get more information at this point up here on what the discussions were at that level? So, for example, let's say it was, there was a transportation issue brought up by the Transportation Department as part of that two-week process, blah, blah, blah. By the time it goes through the rest of the process and gets to the Planning Commission, that's not part of the conversation. But if it had been, but if somebody would have saw those issues or questions being asked or answered, they might have had a greater interest in it in Planning Commission. So, is that a question to ask right now, or is it a question that's...
Yeah, yeah, that's a great question to ask.
So, how do you find out about some of those conversations, or even discussions amongst staff where they're deciding what the priority points are in a project as it moves forward, and some of them move forward with the project to the staff presentation, and some of them get left behind?
I'm trying to figure out a good way to say this, because, well, to be honest, there's not a good way, right? Because part of what we do as the staff is we try to, we try to get to where we're all on the same page, right? Everyone's concerns have been adequately addressed. And once, and until we have enough information, or the project has changed enough to that happens, then we keep going back and saying, "You're not complete yet," right? There are some projects, though, where there are competing interests from the different departments. One of them that I can recall recently was 512 Bath Street. This was the Housing Authority project that was right on Mission Creek, and there was an interest by the Creeks Division of having a bigger setback from the creek, but there was also the competing interest of, you know, affordable housing, right, which is also a big concern. And in this case, they were at odds. And it, you know, through discussions, you know, among staff, planning staff was a big part of that, you know, we took the side of the affordable housing, because, I mean, it wasn't as big a setback as Creeks may have wanted, but it was a bigger setback than was there, and it was, you know, it was a decent setback considering it's downtown Santa Barbara. So, we...
That's a great example. Let's use that one. So, if somebody sitting up here would have an interest in what discussions took place of the lower staff... in what discussions took place at the lower staff level, that would simply just be to reach out to that department or to staff and ask for further information before the project got this, we actually came up for public discussion? And that's a perfect example you list right there.
Right, so I'm, I'm not exactly sure what you mean, like, because what, because let me, let me just-
Because I guess, because by the time it gets here, you're looking at a stack of paper.
Right.
And you're essentially only looking at what staff is providing you.
Right.
And some of those discussions and disagreements took place-
Correct, yes.
Or that at the staff level. And they may or may not be of interest to people sitting up here. But if they never knew that those conversations or disagreements took place and were still focusing on the information in front of you, it really doesn't prompt that, that issue. You know what I mean, unless you're looking for it. And then in the, in the, in the example you give, some people would be looking for that and would, would actually pursue that information. But I, but it just brings to my mind what other discussions or issues get talked about at that lower level that would be of a concern that we never know about.
Well, if you're talking about disagreements that, that the various-
I didn't want to use that word, I'm sorry.
No, no, it's okay, but it's true.
Okay.
I don't, I don't have a problem with it, you know? Because there often are competing interests, you know? The, the different departments have different priorities, right? Public Works, when they're looking at Creeks, oftentimes is looking at, what's the capacity of the, of the creek to handle flood control stuff? Where Creeks Division is often looking at, what's the, what's the, what's the best way to enhance the habitat and restore it back to something original? And oftentimes, those are at odds. And, but what I was going to say was, in my memory, and I've only been doing this for about three and a half years, this job, that's, that's the only thing I can think of where there really was that kind of a, of a disagreement, you know?
Okay, so I, I guess my two cents would be then is that sometimes I feel that I don't get a full picture of the, the at-odds relationship. Because by the time it gets to a staff report, it's, the prevailing benefit is being presented as, as a prevailing benefit, you know, by staff or by the city or by the applicant. And, and I just, I just feel, I mean, I could probably think of some others. You know, when you talk about downtown parking versus a parking garage versus something taking away parking on the street or putting in meters, that type of thing, that same type of thing could percolate up. But you don't know what conversations were taking place down at the staff level before that to help consider what that stance was. So I, so I guess my two cents would be, I just, I just don't feel sometimes that that dialogue that happens before that is a part of the end product. And is there a way to, if you're feeling that way, to ask that question and get that information?
When you say you, you mean you?
Me personally, for sure.
Yeah, so if you're feeling like there's some information that you want that you don't have, yeah, I mean, you should, you should, you should ask us, ask me. Why don't you start with me?
Okay.
Yeah.
One other thing to add, we've kind of been amending the staff reports a little bit. And part of that has been to add a section that's a background section so that we can help give you some of that feedback. So that's kind of a new section that we're trying to use more often when there was that back-and-forth discussion, so that you know what came out of it. Most of the time, the discussions that we have at that DART process aren't necessarily disagreements, it's more just getting everyone on the same page. So most of what gets hashed out is stuff that is not relevant to the current project. But when it is relevant, it's something we do want to explain to you. And sometimes that's what happens to a design review, too, is the project changes. And so we do want to try to give you as much of that background, because it does help you understand where the project has come from.
And just, just on the subject of public works and parks, since we're talking about it, you know, there, there have been disagreements in the past and competing interests, and it hasn't been the most cooperative of relationships. But that's, that's changing. There've been a bunch of high-level discussions and with a lot of different participants, and that's, that's, that's changing, so that's a good thing. Okay, so environmental review, I'm not, I'm only going to touch on this. There's basically three levels of environmental review. You can be exempt from environmental review, and that's CEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act. There's two ways to be exempt. There's something called a statutory exemption. And if you meet a statutory exemption, then it doesn't matter if you have any impacts, it doesn't matter what, you're just exempt. The law says this particular kind of project is exempt no matter what. There's a second kind of exemption called the categorical exemption. And that's an exemption where if you meet the requirements and you don't have any impacts, then you can be exempt. And we use those as, as much as we can. If you're not exempt, then you have to start the real CEQA process. And that starts with something called an initial study. Initial study, we have a template for it, and we've been working on it for a while. But it's about, I don't know, thirty-five pages long before we even start adding any words to it, you know, about the particular project. But it talks about all the different, you know, analysis techniques, you know, the thresholds that we have, you know? And then we start to compare the project against these thresholds. You know, we often have different consultant studies, biology studies, archaeological studies, traffic studies, parking studies, that sort of thing. And, and the purpose of the initial study is to determine whether we think that the project has an environmental impact or not. If, and if it does have environmental impacts, whether they can be mitigated to a point of less-than-significance, right? If, if the project, you go through the initial study, and the project does not have any environmental impacts, then you prepare something called a negative declaration. It's a declaration that the project does not have any environmental impacts. If you find that it does have environmental impacts, but those impacts can be mitigated, you apply some sort of mitigation measure, and then they can be mitigated to a level of less-than-significant, then you prepare something called a mitigated negative declaration. In the city of Santa Barbara, we almost always prepare mitigated negative declarations. The only one that I can think of in recent memory that was a negative declaration was the ND for 457 North Hope. That was the annexation project, it was Trudy Carey's project. That was a, that had no, no significant impacts, very unusual. Wasn't, that was that nine-unit subdivision, ten-unit, ten-lot subdivision? So at the end of the initial study process, if we find that the project has significant impacts that cannot be mitigated to a less-than-significant level, we have to prepare, instead of a negative declaration or a mitigated negative declaration, an EIR, an environmental impact report. And that's a process that, you know, you could do that in-house. We don't, we hire consultants to do that, you know? We, so we have to go through a contract. We have to put out RFPs, request for proposals, you know, and then choose someone to do that. And then we do a pass-through sort of money thing. So the applicants pay us, and then we pay the applicants. So that the, so that the consultant is actually the city's consultant. So that's, that's in order to be unbiased. And, let's see, did I, no, I talked about a little bit later. There are public hearing requirements for, for NDs and EIRs. And then at, after the end of the, after the end of the public hearing process, there, the staff has to respond to any comments. And that response could result in changes to the EIR or the ND. And then that comes back eventually, later on, to be, to be approved at the same time that the project is approved. But we do all this, this is before, before it comes to the planning commission.
Yes?
Danny, I want to ask you about EIRs, and this touches on what I mentioned very briefly in our lunch meeting today. Sort of interested in the life cycle or lifespan of an, of an EIR and its implications with respect to, and the example I used, which was the Cottage Hospital construction or renovation. This had a long trajectory from the beginning to completion of this project. And so certain assumptions were made, in this case, I talked about the helicopter, that, pertaining to the helipad activity. And what arose in the recent community meeting was that two additional specialties were brought online in Cottage since the completion of that EIR and the approval of the project, which has now triggered an increased impact to the community in this specific area. And there seemed to be, I don't want to say a lack of understanding or a lack of clarity in the conversation between Cottage and the community about what happens when an assumption, you know, an initial assumption doesn't bear out. The assumptions don't bear out over a period of time during a long project, and now there is an impact, I don't know whether it'd be considered significant or not, but certainly a significant change to the assumption that the EIR was based on during the course of the project. And this may come back to the council, I don't know, because the community is asking, what recourse do they have given that the impacts have changed based upon the initial EIR? Does that make sense?
It does, Scott wants to answer.
Well, Madam Chair, members of the commission, one, one key thing is that an EIR is an informational document to inform a decision. And there's a timeframe for that decision to be made. The decision is made, and then we keep moving on. And there's a period of time from the certification of the EIR during which its adequacy can be challenged. Once that time period passes, there's a statute of limitation tied to that time period. And when that statute of limitation runs, the adequacy of the EIR as an informational document ceases. You can't challenge it anymore. Whether it's accurate, inaccurate, right or wrong, the document is what it is. And by that point, typically, it's already done its job of informing the decision, good, bad, or indifferent. Regarding the helicopter situation, just, I don't know if, when this would ever be heard again, but it, is the fact that, I don't know, sitting here right now, whether the assumptions of the EIR were accurate or inaccurate. Remember that, that assumption was averaging a number of helicopter flights. You know, it was, it was coming up with an estimated number over a period of time. Well, we've had a very short period of time so far, we've had a lot of use. I don't know if this is just an unusual spike of use. I mean, the statistical sample, my point is that the statistical sample right now is extremely small. We may find that we may go months, I doubt it. But we, we might go some significant period of time with many fewer flights. So, small sample, big problem. The thing is that a, a piece of paper sitting on the shelf someplace isn't really the greatest solution. We're going to have to look to ourselves and, as a community, to find a solution. The EIR is just, it's a big set of paper sitting on a shelf at community development. The solutions-
Then the door is closed, doesn't mean what I'm hearing from you-
From, from the standpoint of, of, you can, we can bemoan whether the, whether the EIR is accurate or inaccurate, that's not going to change. And there isn't a lawsuit to bring about challenging that EIR or even challenging the approval of the hospital. Those, the statute of limitations for both of those actions have run. So that's, that's my point, is we've got to look to ourselves, both the operators of the hospital, the operators of the air ambulances, and those of us in the community to figure out a solution to our collective problem.
I believe the EIR was completed in 2001, is that correct? Bruce?
I would think in an instance like that, there would be some type of overriding considerations for emergency response. It would be like having a trip generation plan for the fire department, and then we have a major fire, and they're limited on so many traffic trips in and out of the station. I mean, it just, those kind of assumptions, I think, are unrealistic. It needs to be flexible for emergency situations, but-
I think that is absolutely true. The, as I recall, and this isn't because I was involved with the project, but I remember somebody saying it this week, that the noise impacts of the helipad were deemed a significant unmitigated impact of the hospital project, and therefore, an overriding consideration was absolutely, was actually required in order to approve the hospital project with the helipad. And so in one sense, that balancing act was already taken, or that, that decision-making process was already made.
The protocol of the flight path, by the way, was the mitig, the noise mitigation measure. Yeah, thank you.
So the, so the next part is the presentation. As you know, we prevent, we present you with a written staff report. Right, and we, we put in the background, like Allison was talking about, we're, we'll be doing more of that, or we're going to try to, as much as, as seems relevant, you know? And, and Mike, sometimes we don't think it's relevant, so we won't put it in. But, so it's a little bit, you know, it's hard to answer your question about, how would you find out about something that, that you wanted to find out about? Anyway, so, background analysis, we make a recommendation based on all of our review of the project, right? And we spend quite a bit of time looking at, at the project. We'll make a recommendation, either to approve or deny. And sometimes it's to approve something different than, than what has been proposed. The, the example of that was last week, 12, was it last week or the week before? 1202 Shoreline Drive, where we saw, we saw a project. And based on all of our history with previous decisions and direction from the planning commission and council, we saw a project that had a unconforming encroachment. And we took the opportunity to say, we think that we're implementing the planning commission and council direction to try to get rid of these, or at least reduce them. But we did feel that it didn't warrant reduction, a hundred percent reduction. So we came in and said, we recommend that the planning commission approve an encroachment of five feet instead of nine and a half feet at its maximum. Right, so the reason that we did that, like I said, is because, you know, we have a history of about, I don't know, ten years' worth of, of the planning commission and the council, too, telling us that we're approving too many modifications, you know, especially front yard modifications. It was all, it was first brought on by a project on Stanley Drive. I don't remember, I don't know if any of you guys were involved with that one. But, so we take, we take that seriously, you know? Now, now we look at that as, you know, another, perhaps another point of view. So we'll have, we'll have others that have the same sort of issues coming up. And we'll be looking at that as well, and making, maybe making a different recommendation next time. Anyway, so we make a recommendation to you based on our analysis of the relevant rules and regulations, what they're proposing, what it looks like, what the ABR or the design review boards have said about what it looks like, size, bulk, and scale, and that sort of thing. And then based on our recommendations, we present findings in the staff report. Now, findings are basically the reason why the commission or the council or whoever the decision-making body is, is approving the project. There are some required findings in the zoning ordinance. And those findings are pretty generic, right? The, the, like, the project is consistent with the general plan and the zoning ordinance, or it doesn't have an effect on traffic, area traffic or parking, that sort of thing. And what we do is we bolster those, because there's, there's some law, there's some court cases that, that state that you can't just do the bare finding. You can't just, you just can't repeat what's, verbatim what's in the code and not add on to it. We always try to put a justification statement, we try to make it a because, right? It, it's consistent with the zoning ordinance because this, that, and the other. Or it won't have a traffic impact because this, that, or the other, right? We, we, we do that, we take that pretty seriously. I spend most of the time reviewing staff reports, looking at the findings, and making sure that there's, the finding does what it's supposed to do, and also that there's evidence in the staff report and all the different exhibits that you have that, that support that finding. So, and then Scott wants to talk a little bit more about the findings.
Well, I'd just like to, to remind the commission of their, there was a Supreme Court case that dealt with a project that was in Topanga Canyon. I forget, it was, the Topanga Canyon Association were the, the plaintiffs against a project. And one of the arguments that they made were, was that the, the decision-making body, whoever it was, a county of Los Angeles or whatever, had made conclusory findings. They, they said, yeah, this is a good project, and just left it at that. Or this project is an appropriate development, you know, like our modification finding, and so forth. And they didn't provide any facts explaining how they came to that conclusion or giving any reason, any rationale why. And the Supreme Court gave us, in their decision, a phrase that is commonly used within land use law process to describe what or how findings should work. And it says that findings are the bridge, the, our findings should bridge the analytic gap between the raw evidence and the ultimate decision, and show the analytic route the administrative agency traveled from evidence to action. And that's, it's the whole point of what Danny's practice, you know, what he was describing, is matching up the facts from, whether it's the staff report, applicant letters- is matching up the facts from whether it's the staff report, applicant letters, presentations, community comment, and so forth. You take all the record before you, and you put that together, and you take the findings, and the findings that you see in the zoning ordinance, those are roadmaps. They are markers for you to, they act as almost a threshold. And what you're trying to find is evidence within the record to help you make a decision whether or not the project achieves the necessary finding that's specified, if there is a finding specified in, whether it's the subdivision map act, the subdivision code for the city, or the zoning ordinance. And so, those, they are specifically made generic within the zoning ordinance. The findings in the zoning ordinance are intentionally, intentionally vague. They're intentional, they are intended to prompt a question for you, so that when you ask that question and you come to an answer, you use the facts that have been presented to you to answer the because this, that, or the other thing. And so, that's why if, you know, we as staff work hard to try to bridge that analytic gap for you, consistent with the recommendation that you find in your staff report. So, if your conclusions as a body, if a majority of the commission is coming to a contrary conclusion, please understand that those findings in your, in your staff report aren't going to be the findings to support that decision. And that may be an appropriate time to request a continuance, or to direct staff to prepare different findings, consistent with the record, and bring them back for further action in the future. We just don't see a lot of projects get denied because of the process that Danny's laid out ahead of time. If you get through PRT and DART and the, the rest of the review process before you get to the planning commission, and you still have a project that is contrary to the zoning ordinance or some other policies of the city, you're going to see a negative recommendation from the staff. I mean, that's, and you don't see many of those, because at some point during the process, the process actually works as a, as kind of like a funnel. And really, the only projects that get to you are the ones that have found a way to not only make their, make the goals of the private project work, but also to find a way to satisfy the community's expectations as well.
Mike?
Oh, Mike's going to call me a pill today. I know she is. So, so my poster child for difficulty with this right now is coastal development permits. As I, you and I have talked, I know you know this. But, because in the actual municipal code, the coastal development permit is about three sentences of language that just says, if you're there, you need one. And then, staff prepares findings from a wide array of resources, whether it's local coastal plan, general plan, different elements of the general plan, and then puts, puts those into the findings. And so, I'm kind, I'm, I appreciate that narrative there, because I like the whole idea of it's intended to prompt me, it's intentionally vague, it kind of gives me the, both the discretion and the responsibility to go find out more. But, when you're actually, when, when you're actually looking at the documentation, the staff report that comes with the recommendation and the findings, and then you go to those same resources and you see what you think are contradictory sets of, of guidance in those resources, but they weren't part of the staff report, is that just, again, that's just a, a situation where that has prompted me to bring that up and pursue that?
It should, yes.
Okay. All right.
Because what, because what we do is, we look through all those policies, right? And at least that's what we're supposed to be doing. Look through all those policies, and we find the relevant ones, and we don't necessarily discuss all of them, because it might be obvious, you know? But for the ones that, that are, that need some sort of discussion, those are the ones we put in the staff report. We've just had a, we had a meeting about this two days ago, where we were talking about this as, as the staff. And then, some of the, some of the staff reports that you've seen, we've put an attachment on the back where we show all the relevant policies. And sometimes, we haven't done that on the smaller projects. But I think we're moving towards doing that for, for all the projects, just so you, so you know that we, you'll know the ones that we looked at and we found to be relevant.
And even ones that you looked at and didn't think they rose to the level of including in the staff report, but we're welcome to go look at. See, I even like to be pointed in that direction sometimes.
Yes, we would, we would, we would put in the ones, and what we've done in the past is we've put in the back, in the attachments, a list, and not just a list, but the, but the actual text of, of those policies that we think are relevant. Okay? And if they're not in there, then we didn't think they were relevant, and you might have a different opinion about that, and then you could, you could call me.
And then, of course, my other poster child for this discontent in this area too, is the, the opening segment of conditional use permits having to do with neighborhood parking. You know, the, the conditional use permit list of functions that are allowable is the second page, but there's a preface on that that says, there will never be a neighborhood impact on, on-street parking. And, and I, you know, I look at that all the time and have that, have the, okay, it doesn't, on paper, it doesn't say, you can ignore that because of community benefit. It says, no, before you even go to allowing one of these 30 types of, of functions in a neighborhood where it wouldn't normally take place, you have to get by this first. And if you can't get by that, then you shouldn't have the rest of the discussion. And I, you know, to me, that's still an annoyance, I think, that the language needs to be changed. Thank you.
Scott? Look as if you wanted to comment.
Well, I had two comments. Well, one, one comment as far as, yes, if there's, if, with the coastal development permits, if you find that there's a policy within either the local coastal program, the coastal act, coastal act regs, or something else in your own research, please contact us ahead of time, so that we can supplement the staff report, whether it's in writing or at the presentation before the commission, on those other policies that you would like. Some, you know, either, either we just missed it, which we hope that's not the case, or if you want some further clarification as to why that particular policy wasn't deemed to be relevant, or material, or if there was some kind of balancing process that went along that removed that from the discussion, then we can provide that information. And then, as far as, yeah, any, any of these findings, that, that particular one for coastal, or for conditional use permits, I personally think it was just an oddly drafted finding, because it, it demands a level of certainty that almost none of your other findings require. Almost the other, almost all of your other findings allow for basically, ultimately, a, a personal opinion or decision to be rendered, and that one particular finding really does push decision-makers into having to somehow promise certainty. And we all know that's just kind of an unattainable goal.
John?
On the shoreline, thank you, on the shoreline example, where the modification was asked for the, that corner, let's say, for encroachment, does it usually occur that if an applicant asks for a modification, that staff would say, we agree or we don't agree, versus the applicant wants so much, and staff says, we recommend that it be somewhat less? Because that sort of puts us in a difficult, puts myself in a difficult position of trying to understand why, before the meeting, let's say, that the applicant didn't agree with staff, or, you know, is it doing something to his project? What is the impact of that? And then, we're sort of, you know, becoming, more analysis is required on our part, which ultimately wound up with the full modification, because we were determining such a small difference. So, I'm just wondering, in the future, would we see more where it's either yes or no, or the exact amount of a modification is agreed upon between the applicant and staff before it comes to us?
It, I mean, I can't promise anything, right? Because it all depends, right? A lot of times, we can strong-arm the applicants into, because they want our support. So, we say, well, if you want our support, you have to do this, right? And then, they'll say, well, okay, I'll do that. And sometimes, they'll say, I want to go forward without your support. I want to, I want to try for the, I want to try and convince the commission to do what I want them to do. And we say, great, you know, that's, that's your, that is your prerogative. That's your, that's your right to do it. But we'll go in with the recommendation, with our recommendation, which is based on, like I said, like a history of, of what we've seen in the past, and what we think is approvable. And like I said at that hearing, you know, that's our recommendation to you. You're the decision-makers. Don't, you're not going to hurt our feelings. I said that specifically, and it's true, because it felt at the time, like, it's like, oh, well, you know, we don't want to go against staff, but, but we also think staff is being stupid, you know? That's what it seemed like to me at the time. And I don't, I don't want you to have to feel like that, you know? That's our recommendation based on past practice, past history, what we think, what we think is approvable. And if you don't agree with that, then you don't agree with that, it's fine. But, you know, it just depends on how much the applicant wants to go forward without staff support.
Madam Chair.
Scott?
So, the commission can understand, you know, a bit more of the thought process here. There are a couple of things going on. One is that staff is trying to take a conservative approach regarding their recommendations, particularly about modifications because of the community's sensitivity to that subject. The second is that staff is, when they're haggling, so to speak, or, and it's not, I don't want to give that, that it really is a haggling, it's, it's a matter of staff looking to their experience, and kind of putting, synthesizing that experience together, and looking at a project, making a recommendation that is consistent with the, the decision-maker's approach to that project, and in that way, telling the applicant what they can expect. The other is that the staff doesn't have the benefit of that public hearing. And, and so, when they're making their recommendations, that's a, that's a significant piece of the puzzle that's missing, that you do have the advantage of, that, you know, and I think that, using that particular project as an example, I think one of the reasons why the commission came to the decision it did on that, and allowed for the, the expanded modification requested by the, the applicant, was the fact that the documentation in support from the neighborhood, and then basically the lack of, of presence of the neighborhood at the hearing, speaking contrary to it. And that, I think that that probably enheartened the, the commission in, in seeing the, the applicant's balance of, I want this modification, so I don't have to do something else in order to achieve the same program with my project. And so, staff didn't have that advantage of, of that public hearing, and, and either the, the comments from the public hearing, or the lack of it. And so, I suspect what you'll see in general will be conservative approaches taken by staff on some of these closer calls, and it's not really that they're trying to kick it up to you, but it's that, that's the way the process is, is done, and ultimately, the planning commission, you know, the staff hearing officer, or the planning commission is the body that has assigned that discretion in the municipal code.
Addison?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On that project that we're talking about right now, for me, one of the reasons that I voted to approve the applicant's requested mod was the amount of demolition that would have been required if we'd have followed staff's recommendation, or we'd gone to the 20-foot setback. In other words, the applicant was proposing to not have to demolish foundation and a wall and so forth, and, and that gets into a whole other area of our general plan and our documentation, city documentation about being environmentally conscious and all that. So, and then also, the increased massing that would occur if we pushed it back from the street would bulge out somewhere else. My, I guess the learning experience of that is that we, as commissioners, don't have to constrain our analysis to only what the applicant tells us or the staff tells us. I only elicited that information by asking the applicant after having read the plans. But nobody brought it out in the public hearing, or the staff report, or in any testimony, until we asked the question. So, I guess the learning experience to take away from that is, as commissioners, we should be willing to do our own evaluation and look for other consequences that may come out of if we go up a certain path as recommended.
Agreed.
Bruce? Oh, yeah. Were you going to say something about what time it is?
Yes.
Bruce, why don't you go ahead?
Okay. Well, I, I think that example really brings to mind, I think there's a reasons, a reason that modification requests come forward, and there's differences between them, and I wish there could be some sort of a distinction as to what is creating the necessity. Is it something that the applicant is proposing, or is it because the rules have changed since the original structure was built, that have now made it non-conforming? And just to keep that and remodel it in the same style as your proposal, you know, the boundary changed rather than the house encroaching. So, I think, I wish there was some distinction between the reason for the initiation of the mod. And if it's a rule change versus an applicant action, there's a big difference there for me. And then, I think the other thing that I've been seeing, you know, especially, you know, being on here for a number of years now, is there seems to be a lot of wiggle room in the consistency of how things are applied on projects. You know, one week, you'll see it this way, and another week, somebody else does the staff report, or the presentation, and it's just, it's not adding up. And I, you know, I hate to question staff on it, but a lot of times, it makes me wonder why we're not getting a more consistent application of, you know, regulations and ordinances and that type of thing.
Well, I mean, that's, I guess it's because of me, you know? I'm the, I'm the common denominator behind all these. I look at all of them, and I, I think I've said this before, my memory's not the greatest, you know? So, I can remember certain things about how we did it before, and, but not everything. But that's something, that's a point well-taken, that I will have to be more vigilant about that.
Well, I would like to add a comment that I wouldn't want staff to start shifting their recommendations away from what the basis is, where, you know, why people are coming in for a modification. Yes, there are kinds of ramifications around it, but still, the 20-foot setback is a general, you know, is part of the zoning ordinance, and it's there for a reason. And so, I, I just hope you won't, I hope the commissioners will feel that, you know, if they see other aspects to it, and, you know, as in your case, Addison, although I happen to disagree with you on that, on the, you know, with giving them the, the full modification that they, they asked for, I, I wouldn't want to see staff diminish their, what they present as a recommendation, the strength of it or whatever, because they think the planning commission might go some other way. Because I, you know, I expect, expect you to work with what the rules are.
Right.
And then, people can come and ask us for changes to the rules.
Yeah, and that's, that's, I mean, it's a balancing act, and we're particularly sensitive these days about modifications, because we've been, I don't know, reprimanded, is what it seems like, from the council, and sometimes from the, from the commission too. And we'd, we'd rather be in a position where the commission says, no, you guys are being too harsh, and we think it's okay, as opposed to, what are you guys doing? You know? Why are you, why are you supporting this mod? So, anyway, that's a little bit of what we, in addition to everything else, you know, based on previous, previous direction. So, it's 3:15, and I said we'd end at 3:00. We're not nearly even done. We didn't even get to the meaty part of what I was hoping for today.
Yeah, I see.
So, would you, would you mind continuing till March 1st?
Okay. Planning Commission?
Sure.
Continue to March 1st? Okay. Continue this item to March 1st.
Oh, you won't be here?
Maybe.
Well, maybe, maybe March 8th? I mean, that, I think everyone's here. Are you here?
Yeah.
So, maybe March 8th then.
Okay.
Oh, the 1st then.
Oh, okay.
You're here the 1st.
Okay. All right, so we continue it to the 1st.
Great. Okay, thank you very much. I hope, I hope you found this helpful.
Yes.
I know we have.
Yeah, it's been very interesting.
I think next, next two weeks will be great. Thank you.
We do have administrative agenda. Are there any committee and liaison reports? Commissioner Larson, I know you were out of town, so I assume there is no staff hearing officer report. She just left, unfortunately. Are there any other committee or liaison reports? If not, that concludes our agenda for today.
Now, if not, that concludes our agenda for today, and the planning commission meeting is adjourned.